Do we have minutes?
I was hoping to get...
Minutes, but we don't have minutes. All right. So, our financial report for March, which is payroll warrants for the town planner for pay period ending in 1918, ending in two, March 2, 2019, signed by Mr. Pecos, acting chair, payroll record for period ending 3/16, signed by Mr. Pecos, acting chair, and payroll record for pay period ending March 30, 2019. We have some expense invoices, Verizon Wireless for the planning iPad monthly charge for March 2019, and a reimbursement to our McManus for a CPT conference registration fee on March 20, 2019. So, here we are.
So, we have five minutes until our first public hearing, and so we'll just start.
Yes, we do. Anybody got any good jokes?
Yeah, our parents sent you a call an email. Jeff Hoffman is not appearing tonight for the 23 Slideroad 131 Newbury Turnpike. There were some additional corrections that needed to be made, so it has to be on the agenda for April 7, too. And we'll probably have another one that night as well for the tennis court.
Okay, so finally getting together.
Finally getting together. We had quite a bit more back and forth, but I think it's sorting itself out.
Good. Okay. We look forward to that.
So, I can give my town planner's report if you'd like.
Go for it.
Okay. We received a communication from the engineering firm AECOM about Mast D O T is expanding its intelligent transportation systems device coverage to include additional devices throughout the Mast D O T District 4. This is to approve congestion management through more efficient incident detection, verification, and response. And they've proposed locations of new devices based on gaps in coverage and the most recent A A D T volumes and crash data. They're putting CCTV cameras at interchanges in segments of highway where there are high volumes of traffic and/or high accident rates. Each location will include a 40 or 60-foot-high pole, a pole-mounted cabinet, and camera lowering device. And it will communicate via wireless 4G LTE cellular connection, and there will be one CCTV camera in Newbury at the 95 Scotland Road intersection, whatever that is, located 10 feet from the existing guardrail, pole height 40 feet, filling a gap in video coverage on I-95, monitoring the exit 56 directional ramps. And apparently it's been approved by a stakeholder, and I'm assuming this is just for information because that actually is...
Mete accident?
That's what they're saying. What they're saying because of accident volume.
Do they say when?
They did not say when it's going in. There were 14 crashes there.
Hi there.
Hello.
On Scott Unroad?
Well, it doesn't say whether it's on Scott Unroad or 95. The next thing, I can either, the select and review the morrow last night, I can either go through that now or under the laser I'll report for the select, which I would prefer.
Well, it's probably going to be more than a couple of minutes.
So, I got an interesting inquiry the other day from a fellow named John Grossi, who until recently owned Latitudes, has recently sold it. And he also, I guess, is involved in the thoroughbred racing business, and so he's looking for 120 acres of Chapter 61A land on which to locate a racetrack. And he says it's a Chapter 61A use, which I would like to verify with town council or somebody, because it seems unlikely to be. And then I had a meeting this morning. We've been working for the last two years on a project to get a solar installation on the landfill. We issued a warrant a few while back, do have a vendor. And I had a meeting with him. Unfortunately, his proposal came in just as they were going from the SREC program to the SMART program for solar in Massachusetts. And he submitted an interconnection agreement, service agreement with the National Grid exactly a year ago. They required a supplemental study, which he just received in last month, and so it looks like the project is going to be reconfigured somewhat. So, we're continuing to work on it, but I thought I'd just let you know that that is something that's been in the works. It looks like the array will have to be downsized somewhat to avoid some significant costs related to interconnection. And that's, I mentioned the A and Rs that are coming up, so I guess that's it for the moment.
And, and, we still have two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes.
Again, I go back. Anybody got any good jokes? We cannot begin a public hearing any sooner than it's posted notice, which is...
I have a joke my 10-year-old told me today. You want to hear?
Sure. Go for it.
So, this duck walks into a bar and says to the bartender, "Do you have any grapes?" And the bartender says, "No, we don't sell grapes. This is a bar." Next day, same bar, same duck walks up and says, "Do you have any grapes?" And the bartender says, "We don't sell grapes. Yeah, this is a bar room." Third day, same bar, same duck, "Do you have any grapes?" The bartender says, "Listen, we don't sell grapes. If you come in here tomorrow, I'm going to nail your feet to the floor." Next day, the duck walks in the bar and says, "Do you have any nails?" And he said, "No." And he says, "Well, do you have any grapes?" I have a 10-year-old.
I'm good.
One minute.
I don't know. Don't worry.
Do you need an easel to put that up on?
I don't. I need to address the board about the fact that, well, I'll wait for you to say it.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Martha, I could update the board on that MVP discussion briefly.
Sure, if you want to. We're still working on that.
Just the consultant who worked with the town last year to complete the municipal vulnerability preparedness workshop, which I think most of you were aware of last year, but there's a round of MVP action grants. There's funding available to communities who completed their plan. And I joined a meeting with town staff and Ellie Baker from Horsey-Witten to talk about whether Newbury is interested in applying for any of the funding. And there's a discussion underway about looking at Plum Island Turnpike, the vulnerability of the turnpike to future climate impacts. So, it would be a joint, some form of a joint project with Newbury for it and Newbury to look at that. And it's a, the grant deadline is coming right up, so if Newbury isn't in a position to get that together in this short time frame, there's another round of grants later this summer that the town would be eligible for. So, sort of looking at the priorities that came out of that plan and thinking about what would be a good project.
Thank you.
Did I use up a minute?
Okay. I would like to continue the public hearing for the open space residential development that wants to have the orchard stood. And that's the part to leave the notice. Was there a notice? Or do we not have a notice? Do we not do a notice?
We don't have to.
No, it's fine.
You're off the hook.
So, Mr. Luster, would you like to give us sort of a recap?
I would, thank you. I would start with saying I've been doing real estate development since 1996, and I've been the same engineer, architect, builder, and attorneys for the most part since that time. I got a call this afternoon that Mr. Bello was unable to attend the meeting tonight. I called my attorney for the first time in 23 years and said, "Please review what it's going to cost me to change engineers," because I think this might be the third time I've had to do this because he was unable to attend. So, I don't, we did submit from Eastern Land Survey a couple of pieces of information. Their absence, a major piece of information, which is a soil test, which has nothing to do with Eastern Land Survey necessarily. We do have to get out there and do it when the weather works and we're coming into that season. But I am so frustrated by this that I need to find out if I make a change in my team to have someone make this plan and at least follow it through to the conclusion of this process, what that would do to our schedule, what it would do to our application and the plans. So, again, this is not something that I've ever had to do before, but I stand here in front of you knowing that we submitted some information, but I'm not capable to answer any questions from, or any, even perhaps even passing along any information. I don't feel comfortable doing that. I feel like something would get lost in the translation. So, I guess I just have to ask for your patience as I talk to Mr. Rolloffs about making a change in my team to include the engineer, because I'm just like, I can't do this anymore. I can't keep coming up in front of you and telling you we don't have the information. So, happy to answer any questions around this, but I don't know what else to tell you other than the truth.
Well, given the fact that we don't know, you know, what all the moving parts are going to be, have you, you know, make a switch? I can understand your frustration and why you'd want to do that. You know, I can't tell you what to do, certainly, but it would seem maybe just to withdraw without prejudice, regroup and come back again might, you know, be a clean way to do it.
It might be, but I'd rather not do that tonight because it's new to me, this particular situation. And I can see us having that answer prior to your next meeting. We do have, we do have the land, continue to have the land extended and under agreement. I think we have a plan that we like. I just have been having trouble getting information through media to you folks. So, if I had another day to consider this, I probably would have made a different approach today, but I didn't. And I just want to tell you that's kind of where we are. And I don't really want to withdraw because although my lawyer might tell me that's not a bad approach, I don't really know that right now. What I'd like to do is try to finish it and to its conclusion, my lawyer has.
What's the status on the option for, is it 33 Pearson Drive?
That is extended as well with Ms. Baker.
Do you have any documentation to that?
I can send that along to you tomorrow. It was, it came to, it was through February that it's extended now.
That's the last we have it.
That's right.
And to when is it extended?
I don't know the date. I don't remember the date. Through the summer.
I think the difficulty is now, the public keeps appearing.
Yep.
And it's discouraging for us because it's on our agenda, it's consuming, but I think it's very concerning to the public who keeps showing up. And I would think it might be appropriate to extend some consideration to the people behind you.
Yep.
And ask for their understanding and support.
Yep, yep. I mean, I apologize for this, but I feel awful. You know, that's why I'm...
Would not necessarily mean funding a new application by any means. Am I correct on that? Probably a testimony, not a new application?
Well, it would be, in effect, a new application, but any testimony that had been submitted so far could be incorporated, and we've done that in the past, and the board might consider waiting the application fee. And I don't know, it's actually a question I would like to ask town council, if there's a change in engineer, does that, what impact does that have on the status of the application? Because it was accepted with one engineer and a new team.
And it might be that the solution on my end turns out to be adding more responsive talent to Eastern Land Survey to follow it through. And I just, I'm frustrated right now because this is all, this is new to me over the last couple hours, but, so I don't know the answer.
Is the attorney currently have someone you've worked with before?
Jeff is, Jeff is new to us because he's from this area, and we do that often enough. We have Jack Kelty on the North Shore, and then if we're in a particular place where we don't know the process, we try to hire someone reasonably local.
And so far, your relationship with the attorney?
He's wonderful. Yeah. And Kim Turner, I mean, I think the issues that we have are 98% engineering issues. I think people, even a bunch of us who don't like the idea of a development going there, you know, there's some of them driven by some of the projects we've done on Swanskin, and say if they like what they see, they don't necessarily want to exclude them. So, we're good with the team. Kim Turner's been excellent, and Jeff has been wonderful. I just, they just have this one issue.
So, I guess if it's not going to be withdrawn without prejudice, then Martha, the question that I guess I'll ask is, we don't have the soil test to actually tell us that we have a functional yield plan, is that right?
That's one of the big outstanding issues.
And that's been, that's been a concern for a long time.
That's been a concern since the beginning.
Okay.
Since December.
You've got a problem since the beginning of this project.
Mm-hmm.
And it's still here, and we don't have that information, regardless of what's been going on most recently with your engineer. That's been something on the table for some time, and it hasn't been answered. And so, from, I guess, from our perspective, we don't have a yield plan, is that correct?
Well, it's not clear yet that the yield plan as presented is really a viable yield plan with 14 lots on it.
Right. That's what we're in the process of determining, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I guess, what are you proposing?
An extension to one of your next couple of meetings, so I can reconnoitre and see if we can get things rolling with someone new or with a more responsive engineer.
Any thoughts?
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, but this guy comes in and, you know, really, I mean, from what you're telling us tonight, it's really no light in sight.
No, that's not what I'm telling you.
Well, it's still by uninterpreted.
Yep.
You know, to Peter's point, I mean, we've had, you know, a lot of concerns about the yield plan from day one, and it was still right where we were in November.
No, no, we've got, we've got a number of communications back and forth between your peer review engineer and our engineer. There've been a response, and then another response back to us, and then two responses back to them. So, that's, that's not an insignificant amount of work, I don't think. So, I disagree, I guess.
Well, if we entertain an extension, I think we've got to give you enough time to do it. It's not going to be a two-week or a four-week extension. It's going to have to be, you know, out there, because you've got the, in a minute, you know, you've got to figure out where your next engineer is coming from, whether he accepts, you know, I know engineers that are going to, whether they're going to accept the work that's been done, whether they're going to want to redo the work, you know, because they don't necessarily want to accept the work of a prior engineer. I mean, you've got, you don't know really where you are if that's where you are.
That's why, that's why I'm kind of leaning on my attorney a little bit.
So, I think saying, yeah, exactly. And you need to consult with your attorney as well, I agree. So, you know, this is not going to be a, like, two-week or a four-week process. So, do we want to consider, or do we want to wait and have you, we have to do something. We can't just leave it.
Right. I mean, I guess unless...
Can I make a suggestion? I don't mean to interrupt, but perhaps extend till the next meeting, and then we present our plan moving forward at the next meeting. And we'll all, you know, I don't mean we'll present the work, I mean, we'll, I'll know more than I know as I'm standing here tonight.
About how you're going to go forward?
Yes.
Or if attorney Rolloff suggests you to withdraw without prejudice.
Exactly.
With that understanding that we will not entertain, obviously, any new engineering work or any detailed work, I might consider that.
I'm just trying to give you and me more information before you make...
So, I mean, is that something that we're allowed to do, to decide what it is that we will discuss at the next meeting?
Yeah, we can just have the agenda for that.
As long as it's limited to...
This issue.
This issue. How, you know, and assuming that your attorney is going to be here with you, you know, to explain where you're at.
Sure.
And why you're making whatever decision, you know, you make. And then from there, you know, you're going to have to deal with engineers.
Yep.
Any further comments?
Well, after that meeting, we should have more information on what the basic extension would be.
Right.
It won't be another meeting, but it might be some other...
Right, exactly.
That was my thought as well.
I'm going to, there's no further comments here, I'm going to open it up to the public to hear what they may have said.
My name is Craig Loth. I live on Archie Street on the other side of Bogaris Hill, and I am also frustrated. We've been at these meetings numerous times, and we get the same story, just not prepared. So, something has to happen here. I mean, there's a number of here that have been here for several meetings, and we're not getting any answers. So, we're frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Louis, to add a comment?
Shannon Howard, 61 Central Street, in reference to PERC test holes. I spoke to Steve Fram, Board of Health. He asked me where was the health agent there when they dug the first PERC holes, and did he approve them?
My understanding is that Deb was out there when the soil testing was done.
The first round tried to us that we bought with the, they were done with the local health inspector.
Right, with...
With the, yeah.
So, that's a yes, they have been approved?
What's, what's shown on the drawing, my understanding is that they were witnessed and approved. There are a couple of areas that are not suitable for PERCs. There is one area where they're showing a shared septic system, and correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
That was determined to be suitable for a shared septic.
So, Steve Fram from Health says the PERC holes have to be dug where the sewage treatment zone is going to be installed, about the middle of the field.
Right, right. And that's, that's what they've shown for the shared system.
So, the holes were dug over there? I thought they were dug in the middle of the field.
So, the, I'm sorry. So, the, the PERC tests that were done initially, prior to our involvement, were middle of the field. We then did soil testing to determine where we would put the septic system and came to the location that we would put it, and now we're attempting to do, or in the process of doing, additional soil testing. So, the original PERC tests that showed perccable soil were before our time, but we bought the results with our, with our, buying the land, putting the land under agreement.
So, the additional testing you're proposing, is that for each of the 14 lots to determine that they can each, that each of those lots have built them?
I don't believe it is in each of the lots, no, but it's just more soil testing.
Because, I mean, that's a concern, and it was alluded to earlier, you know, that if we really have a viable yield plan here because of the lack of, you know, it seems that it's, you're going to have a problem getting PERCs done for those lots, particularly on the western side. And I don't think there was much done out there.
No, there was, there was a lot practically right down the middle where the road, where it took the road to be.
I mean, the question being, you know, obviously, the OSRD is dependent, the yield for the OSRD is dependent on what your yield plan shows as viable lots, being the only point I'm trying to make.
Thank you. I have a question. How many people besides Craig are here because of this hearing? And how many times have you come?
Every time.
Every time.
How many times is that? Four, five, really?
How many meetings you've got scheduled?
Yeah, I don't know. How many times have we...
Yeah, I think it's about six.
Plus the walk room, the walk...
Of the walk around, too. Okay. That's a lot. Six times.
Well, I think given the, has anybody else had any thoughts?
I don't.
All right. We'll tie it here.
I mean, I think we've asked for additional information. Until we have that, I'm not sure.
Exactly. So, but I think, I think, I don't think the request to extend for, till the next meeting or whenever we can fit it in, to decide how and if you're going to go forward, and have that be the only topic of meeting, no additional, you know, if and how are you going to go forward, you got a new engineer, you don't have a new engineer, or your attorney advises you to just pull out, regroup, and then come back, you know? You know, so you make those decisions, and you come back and tell us essentially what you decided. I don't think that's out of the realm of reasonable. You know, it is, it is frustrating for all of us because, you know, we all sit here and read all this paper and go through all these plans and, you know, prepare for these meetings. So, it's, you know, considerable time suck, so to speak, excuse my language, for all of us. But, you know, I can, I'm not sure when the next meeting makes sense for us, given we've got quite a few things that are going to come up on the agenda, but, well, I would entertain a motion to do so.
And it would presumably be short.
Yes, exactly. So, it would be, you know, you just tell us where you're at.
Two comments. Just two comments.
Yeah. Any further thoughts? Any further thoughts from the public?
Do you, are you proposing you can prepare that for the next meeting, or that's two weeks?
I think we can do it in two weeks. It wouldn't, it certainly wouldn't bother me if you said you'd rather see me in four weeks to get a more definitive answer. I'm at your convenience. I mean, I, I'll tell you, to answer your question directly, I'll have an answer on this issue by the end of next week. I'm certainly, next week I'm serving because it can't, can't wait. I only mean to suggest if you would rather do it two weeks after, right? Because two meetings out, I think, makes sense.
So, that would be the, that would be the May 1 meeting. The only thing we're looking at right now potentially for that night is a possibility continuation of the House Senate public hearing either that night or the 7th, and that... possibly a continuation of the health senate public hearing either that night or the seventh, and that, we should have that date set next Tuesday.
Well, well, given, yeah, well, given the short nature of this proposed meeting.
Seven ten question.
Yeah, I don't know if you can even say seven o'clock if you want.
Seven oh five?
Seven oh five.
I move that we continue this public hearing, uh, to May first, seven oh five.
Any discussion? Paul Taylor? Thank you. Do we have a request for a continuation or?
No, from him, it's kind of understood. So. Continuing this, this, well, last.
Yeah, I'd like to continue the public hearing for a modification to a previously through site plan, Newbury Golf Center, Scotland Road. Because of various circumstances, the board of selectmen had to continue this hearing from last night until April ninth.
Okay, yes.
We are proposing that we also continue this hearing and do a joint, uh, meeting with the board of selectmen on April ninth. So, do I take public comment? Yes, we have some things to talk about.
Janine Cunningham, one forty-three Scotland Road, I was just wondering if you could tell us how the site walk went on Saturday. I wasn't able to go and I'm on the bow on all three sides of him, so.
I mean, it was just more of a seeing where the site is after going through it. You know, not a whole bunch had changed. It just gave us more of an insight of, you know, how they need to progress forward at this point. And, uh, there were, there were no, you know, there were no major omis or, you know, or any, any concerns. But, I think it was more for the boards who hadn't been there now in a few months to heaven their heads what, you know, when we go and talk with engineers and whatever about how it's going to progress forward, um, what that, you know, visually means. I think that's more of what it was for.
Did you get over to the back with a wet man floor that he had kind of was supposed to be putting that together? Because I know there was a lot of brown runoff, quite a bit this winter.
Apparently, that's our understanding also, but when we were out there, that was not the case.
Okay, all right, just wanted to double check on that.
Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, I'd just like to say one thing about that project. Again, Craig Loth from Archer Street, and I'll certainly make my, uh, thoughts known at the selectman's meeting, but, uh, boy, that's a terrible eyesore when you drive down Scotland Road, stuff like that, I can't tell you how long. They can't fix, finish that in a timely fashion, it, it should go back to its original state. I mean, you drive down there, it's, it's not a tribute to the town as it stands right now. It's just terrible.
Thank you.
All right, so now do we move to continue?
Move that we continue the public hearing for Newbury Golf Center to the ninth of April.
Tuesday, what's that, at seven fifteen?
Second please.
Seven fifteen.
At seven fifteen.
Here.
Second.
Any discussions? Paul Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got.
Ten minutes.
Seven, seven minutes. Uh, we're too bad, we don't make up the war.
Sure.
So, as far as the, the, uh, the general bylaws and the zoning bylaws are concerned, um, the board, uh, selecting, there was some concern about the, uh, general bylaw regarding roosters. And so, the board selecting decided not to put that on the war, because that was taken off.
I noticed.
So, Chief Riley instead is, is going to, um, kind of work with the animal control count person and, um, also, uh, town council to draft something on roosters animals in general, not just saying the out-roosters, but there was, you know, concern about the fact that we are a farming community, even though this was specifically addressing non-farm roosters. There were at least a couple of selectmen who were concerned about that. As far as the marijuana is concerned, there was, um, it, it did get included on the war in this draft. If there's a difference of opinion on whether daycare should be in or out, um, so that'll just go forward and, and, um, Damon will probably make a motion to tell me to exclude daycare from, from that use. And there was also some concern about the reduction of buffer zones for residential, um, roosters. So, we'll see, we'll just end up seeing what the discussion is. There are also questions about the one, um, dwellings using dwellings for site construction trailers and, um.
I'll go back to the marijuana, it made setbacks and dwellings, um, was that raised by the selectman or members of the public?
Uh, it was raised by the, by the selectman, I'm just concerned that it might be too close, kind of wondering whether the board was, was making that change. Uh, the one regarding special permits, I guess JR had gotten a question, um, I think some people sort of misconstrued it thinking that, um, the selectmen were being taken out of the special permit granting authority altogether, so we tried to clarify that, that, that CDA planning board are being added, the selectmen are not being taken out. And there were some questions about wireless and I was wishing you were there to answer. There was, there was concern on the part of, of one of the selectmen about, um, reducing the, the buffer zone from nine hundred to three hundred feet. And that there might be some unintended consequences.
There always might be some unintended consequences, so, you know, we'll do the best we can, we can do. You know, if it's an issue, obviously, it won't go. Nine hundred feet seems to me, I mean, again, you know, somebody raised the issue of three hundred foot, I mean, uh, three football fields or between, uh, you know, and the way the technology is going to change, people are going to have to come, come around and not have coverage. It's really what, what is going to come down, so. You know, we'll get there. So.
Are we there yet? Those were the highlights, uh, no.
Nope.
Four minutes.
Four minutes.
Liaison reports.
Karen, you, um, as, you started saying something about the dwellings as being used as construction trailers.
Um, yeah, it was the same question, Mr. Matthews made ask the same question of the selectman that he did at, at our public hearing.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm not sure I'm answering it very well still, to, so I'm not sure that I've really answered your question.
Leslie Matthews on Luden Main Street, I think the question of the wording dwellings may be misconstrued by those people who are going to be taking out the permits. Where dwelling does, through the dictionary means a living inhabited place and not just a place of business. So, it's just to avoid any kind of problems where anybody was coming in and doing any kind of construction that they should not be living on the property while construction goes on, it's only for business reasons.
Well, if the owner is there, the owner can still live in the existing house.
Right, like if I was building on my own property.
Right, right, right.
But, just some people scrambled the things up, so, I, that's the only, that was the only concern that we had with the particular wording on that.
And I think that it was, the wording was suggested by, by the building inspector and reviewed by town council. I think he chose that because it's a building that's being used as a dwelling right now.
But if a developer came in or a contractor came in, it, they would not, if they're not going to be inhabiting the new space, they would only be able to use it as a business reason, as an office site.
Temporarily.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can I please on the post?
No, I haven't had a meeting.
You have a meeting?
No.
And I have nothing from NVPC either. And however, going to a, um, a conference tomorrow morning on the future of transportation. Karen Conard, who is the executive director of NVPC, was one of the commissioners on the future of transportation commission and they came out with a report, um, it was, uh, right at the end of last year or beginning of this year, and there's going to be a conference tomorrow, um, in Cambridge, just reporting on their findings and their reports, so it should be, uh, it should be very interesting. That's my NVPC report.
Can I add another NVPC report? I attended the NVPC Stormwater Collaborative meeting today, which is a monthly meeting, um, James Saret and John O'Connell were there as well, as they usually are. But I was very excited to hear the announcement that they've hired a new environmental planner.
Oh, they have.
How do you think that's, yeah.
I have not heard that, yes.
Just announced, Karen announced it this morning, um, they've hired Jen Hughes, who has been conservation agent for the town of North Andover, is currently conservation agent for the town of North Andover. She's the chair of the Ipswich Conservation Commission. She's been on the Pi Rivers Partnership Steering Committee for several years. She's really excellent and, um, super excited, I think she's going to be a really good resource for, for Merrimack Valley Planning District moving forward. We talked, um, the presentation at the Stormwater Collaborative was about, uh, the MS four permit. Which we're sort of wrapping up year one of the five-year permit for that and the town, um, Horstley Wetton was working with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to just kind of outline, making sure all the towns are where they need to be relative to the new regulations for year one. So, uh, they sort of went through all the, um, requirements coming up and looking ahead at year two, there are some things that ask the town to look at bylaws and regulations, so.
Why don't you explain a little bit of what that permit is?
Sure.
Because, you know, folks.
Yeah, for the camera. So, it's called the MS four, which stands for municipal separate stormwater system.
Small.
Small stormwater systems, four S's. And it's a permit in Massachusetts that's, um, it's an EPA permit, but it's, in Massachusetts, it's regulated by DEP, Mass DEP. And it's, uh, looking at sections of communities that are of a certain, um, density. So, for Newbury, the MS four area is mostly bifield, actually.
And, and also around the upper green, it's the urban, it's the urbanized area, so it's Plum Island, the upper green and, and sort of the bifield village area.
Yes. So, it asks the town to, um, basically report back on how they're addressing stormwater, which non-point source pollution is the number one source of pollution on water bodies, um, in Massachusetts and most places across the country. So, um, there's been a permit in place since two thousand and three, but the new permit was, uh, implemented last July. So, we're sort of, and it's a five-year permit, so it asked the town to tell EPA what it's doing on street sweeping and cleaning catch basins and mapping outfalls and doing dry weather testing to find hotspots of pollution.
I listed discharges.
Yeah.
Well, it's just, it's just another one of those processes that the town is required to do, that, you know, most people don't even know that you're required to do it. And so, it's, you know, it's, it's good to bring it up, you know, and that and explain.
Sure. And the current permit that Kristen was just talking about is, is basically it's planning, it's sort of getting everything in place. So, right now, we're not required to do any major kind of structural changes, but presumably the next five-year permit after this, we'll get into some of those retrofits and things. It's all best management practices and.
Yeah, the Stormwater Management Plan is actually due, um, the, some, June thirtieth, so that's kind of the first big thing. And again, it's just kind of putting your arms around all the things the town is already doing.
Thank you.
We there? I guess we're there. So, the, um, that's the very last thing in your package is the request.
So, I'd like to continue the public hearing. This is the last one page, yeah, for the Green ER, uh, the Green ER Upper Green Project. We have a request from Green ER to accept their request to withdraw without prejudice. You want me to read this or should I?
Um, I don't think you need to read the whole thing, just, uh, attention, Newbury Planning Board, maybe.
Uh, so, attention, Newbury, Newbury Planning Board, Project Green ER would like to withdraw a site plan review application to the Newbury Upper Green without prejudice. So, does the board have any comment on that request?
I, did they suggest if they're going to come back in a different way or, I didn't know if that came up at the selectmen's?
It did come up at the selectmen's meeting, basically what they said is they, they're, they're trying to see if it's, it's possible to break it down into some more discreet things that the selectman would like to see done on the green and that they might then, um, donate funds for particular things like replacing the flagpole or fixing the retaining wall or areaing the pond or something like that. So, they've requested a, a list from the selectmen of things that they might like to see done.
So, any comment for the public?
Fred Thurl, twenty-six Marsh Avenue, Newbury, well, Newbury, that's obvious. Yes, I was at the selectman's meeting and, um, we don't want to drop this ball. They have, they had great intentions and, uh, not all of us agreed with everything they wanted to do specifically, but they did offer, at the selectman's meeting, they offered to try to be a fundraiser, to raise funds to do this. I happen to know that there are already funds set aside and I believe it's a sum of fifty-four thousand dollars that my cousin gave years ago to the beautification of the upper green, as Sylvia London talked about. But, uh, we've got to keep this ball rolling. And I noticed somebody has, the, the green had, the pond has been overfull for quite a while because there's a grid blocking the outlet. I noticed somebody has cleaned out the grid enough, so we finally lowered the pond level and that in turn has lowered the flooding on the, on the green. But there's lots of things that can be done immediately there by the DPW that can improve that green and we've got to follow through on it. It's as simple as that. That's one comment, I have a general comment also. How many people here could hear everything this board said tonight? Yeah, exactly, you mumble, and if you're going to mumble, pull the chairs forward here so we can hear you because, really, I mean, a lot of this seemed like a secret meeting.
Oh, some noticed, okay.
And I know I have a loud voice and I've been criticized, but that's, that's too bad, people can hear me. But we just can't let this drop. And I know it's not up to this board, it's up to the Selectmen.
I know, but I, I will make a comment to your comment if I may. And that is that, can you hear this?
Yep, now.
Thank you. It just seems that sometimes when things are proposed, that the comments, the comments are like getting machine guns, you know?
Oh, that's true.
You know, and it's, it's, it just seems that if people could be a little more cognizant of their respect for whatever, you know, was happening, that it, it just might help something like this, you know, maybe it wouldn't have come to this end. You know, maybe things could have been worked out. I don't know, but, but, you know, it's, there are times when you just feel like, you know, somebody proposes something, and there's always somebody there ready to take their legs out from.
Guilty, guilty as charged, I understand that. But, but, you know, we have to keep in mind what that green is.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, no, no argument from me there.
Okay, but I, I expressed my thanks to the group at the Selectmen's meeting, and I just reiterate it here, I really appreciate their effort. And I, it doesn't seem to be the right direction to go, but if they're willing to raise funds, we ought to be able to come up with something that they could raise funds for.
Agreed.
And the Selectmen wanted to wait until summer, which is a, which is a problem. Why wait until summer? Why, why not get off the stick? Not, again, it's not up to you, but the geese are already back. I was there yesterday, and it's a mess on the foot already. Speaking of stormwater, non-pointed pollution. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
So can we have a motion to accept their request?
I move that we accept, that we accept the request of Green ER that was received on the 21st of March.
To withdraw.
To withdraw without prejudice. Second.
Any discussion?
They got one more?
Yeah, just a question. The Conservation Commission's already signed off on this. Are they going to have to go to them? Are they going to have to go to them and ask to withdraw again?
I'm honestly not sure what the process is there. My understanding is that the order of conditions has not been filed, so there may be, because the CONCON was waiting for additional information, so.
Oh, I thought they had already approved, the plan as presented.
Yeah, but that's a moot point at this, at this point, that's a moot point really, because they have, don't have the other approvals.
Right, right.
But will they have to come before the Conservation Commission and ask to withdraw it because?
They already had it.
Anybody else is, is given?
They can't withdraw because they already had their hearing.
They had their hearing, they, they did close it. As I said, I don't think the order of conditions was written. And I'm not sure if there's a timeframe within which that needs to be written and filed at the registry, so that, it, it may be a moot point for that reason as well.
Thanks.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Fred. See that? What else?
ZB is the H2, okay.
So, yeah, we've been through the liaison reports that we have. So unless there's any other items to be discussed that anyone wants to bring up, I would entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Paul in favor?